Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Monday, August 28th, 2023, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board. Our secretary is not here yet, so I will take roll call. Ms. Jennifer Nelson-Williams is not here right now, but she is expected to join us a little bit later. I will now ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will have a moment of silence afterwards for Coach Jack Meacham. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our presentation this evening. The 2022 and 2023 National High School Coaches Association Coach of the Year and Boys Swimming, Mr. Inskeep.
Thank you, Mrs. Browning, and members of the board, Dr. Bearsford. First of all, just a note of gratitude from all of us at Carmel High School to our central administration staff and their support last week through our tragedy with Coach Meacham, and very greatly appreciated all the support they provided us at the high school. Tonight, we have the opportunity to honor Chris Plum. Chris had quite a year in 2023, and it's still only August. Some of those highlights include the following: raising the state championship trophy at both the girls' and boys' swimming state championships, making his career number 29 for state titles won, which is the most in IHSA history for a head coach. And this summer was highlighted by a selection to the USA National Team Coaching Staff at the World Team Championships in Japan in July. And this is for the seniors, not the junior nationals, but the world championships in Japan. Carmel Swim Club had three greyhounds on the national team, including current junior Alex Shackell. Which brings us to tonight's honor. Earlier this month, Chris was awarded the National Coach of the Year by the National High School Coaches Association for the sport of boys' swimming. He is very deserving of this award, and his impact on the swimming community in Carmel lives on every day, especially with the opening of the new Carmel Swim Academy with Carmel Swim Club. Chris Plum.
Thank you, and congratulations again. We will now, next on our agenda is public comment. Public comments shall be guided by the rules notated in the handout everyone received this evening, under public guidance heading. We only have one public comment tonight, but I do want to remind you of some of our guidance for those that comes from our policy. Please ask, please wait to be recognized by myself and preface your comments by a name and group affiliation if applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Please direct all your comments to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. And as a general matter, the school board will not act or respond to questions or comments made during public comment. All right, we have our one and only tonight, Mr. Jim May.
Thank you. I'm Jim May. I'm a parent with two kids at Woodbrook Elementary. I'm here tonight speaking not just on my own behalf, but to deliver a statement of support for our school libraries that's been signed by a group of 850 Carmel residents. That group includes 524 parents of current CCS students and 122 parents of CCS graduates, as well as parents of future students, grandparents of current students, alumni, and other citizens who just support our schools. The group also includes a bipartisan mix of current and aspiring members of our city government, including our current mayor. For context, earlier this year, HEA 1447 was enacted by our legislature and signed into law by our governor. Under a common sense reading of the law, the portion that deals with school libraries codified statewide policies, procedures, and requirements that seem to already be in place at Carmel Clay Schools. That said, anti-public education groups in some areas of the country have attempted to abuse similar laws as a means to attack our students' First Amendment rights. Sadly, they have occasionally achieved a measure of short-term success. There's already evidence that our own local anti-public education groups will be seeking to abuse HEA 1447 in a similar manner. Just last week, we saw a local leader in one such group publicly calling our schools' libraries unsafe and suggesting it may be time to get rid of them. I know that this person did not say get rid of a book or specific books that they dislike, but to get rid of school libraries altogether. To voice our support of CCS and its policies, I and several other parents wrote and signed a statement and then shared it with other parents that we know. Many of these people texted or emailed it to additional CCS parents, as well as their friends, neighbors, and social groups. As I said, we ended up with the signatures of 850 people. To briefly summarize the three key points of this statement: One, we reject the idea that LGBTQ individuals are somehow inherently sexual or that mere acknowledgement of their existence or rights constitutes sexual content. Two, we believe that our school libraries should reflect the diversity of our population. Three, we embrace and promote literacy and believe that our school's default stance should be that books in general offer serious literary, artistic, political, and/or scientific value. I have a printed full copy of the statement and accompanying signatures that I will provide to the board administration after tonight's meeting. I also have a copy of the statement without signatures, if any members of the press would like it. As always, thank you to the board and the administration, as well especially to the teachers and staff at our schools for everything you guys do for our kids.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move on to the, our consent items tonight. Consent includes personnel, claims, payroll, minutes from the special session on July 10th, minutes from the regular session on July 24th, and minutes from the workshop session of June 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving? Greg?
I have a discussion point. The, we've talked about this before, the minutes tend to have a little detail on discussion items and reports and things. As far as it doesn't usually capture the discussion that we have on or question, so it... But there is a lot of verbiage added for other items in the, during the meeting. And it just, I'd like to see our minutes to be more inclusive as far as all the content that's talked about. An example that I've got on this, the minutes from, what day was that? It was the July minutes that we had, on the legislative update, we had a lot of discussion. One of them was on HEA 1447. And that wasn't mentioned at the board. I think that should have been in the minutes that we were going to come back and revisit that. So I have a problem with our minutes not having the content that I'd like to see present that has some of the more important, I imagine. I know it doesn't have all the discussion, but I think when there's a significant part, it should be in there. So I will not be voting for the consent items tonight because it's all-inclusive, but I have a problem with that one set of minutes.
And as discussed before, Colleen, our great transcriber down there, does document during our meetings, and then we have the recordings, which any member of the public can watch live, live via YouTube anytime after. So, but I do appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right, any other comments? We will now move to take a vote. All those in favor of consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Four to one. Sorry. Thank you. Appreciate you. Oh, you abstained?
No, I'm voting no.
Oh, so four to one?
Right.
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to a public hearing for this evening. So at this time, I will suspend the regular board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for public input regarding the consideration of entering into one or more leases with a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. This is the first of two hearings on these topics. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments regarding these plans before we invite members of the public to offer input?
I would. There's a very specific process that we go through, and so I need to read exactly what this hearing's about and so forth. And then Colleen's going to show up on the screen. We also are providing the projected tax rates and levies and so forth. So I'll begin. Notice of public hearings have been previously published to permit the board to conduct public hearings in conjunction with its consideration of the issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. The proceeds of such general obligation bonds or first mortgage bonds would be used to pay for the cost of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, Creekside Middle School, Carmel Middle School, and Cherry Tree Elementary School, certain technology improvements and upgrades, and all projects related to any of the foregoing, foregoing projects as further described. Indiana law requires that the board conduct two public hearings prior to considering adoption of a resolution preliminarily determining to issue general obligation bonds or enter into a lease or leases for certain controlled projects. Tonight, the board will conduct the first hearing. The second hearing will occur on September the 11th. The law requires that the following information be made available to the public at each hearing. The 2024 facility project, for which the board is considering issuing general obligation bonds or entering into one or more leases, consists of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Cherry Tree Elementary School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of major renovations throughout Cherry Tree Elementary School, including without limitation, replacement of mechanical systems, repainting, replacement of carpet and other finishes, and major programmatic renovations to reconfigure student learning spaces, particularly providing expanded learning spaces, including an enlarged, large group instructional, instruction space and renovation of the library media center to remove an existing loft, which will be, will provide for a new maker space and an improved learning space dedicated to STEAM concepts and expanded spaces to accommodate the staff who now supports student learning and renovate, student learning, and renovation of the main entrance and office spaces to improve functionality and to provide greater security at the main entrance. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, including but not limited to, improvements consisting of improvements and renovations to Carmel High School Stadium, including major renovations throughout the facility, major programmatic renovations to support the current programs, which utilize the stadium, and expansion of the home side portion of the stadium to accommodate improved and expanded spaces to accommodate the growing, growth of programming that utilize such spaces, and improvements to the high school building and surrounding area to include repair or replacement of the cooling tower, installation of LED lighting in the legacy gym, repair or replacement of concrete curbs and sidewalks, and interior signage improvements. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Creekside Middle School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of paving repair and resurfacing, concrete repair and improvements, signage improvements, repair or replacement of parking lot lighting, and landscaping renovations and improvements. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel Middle School, including the special ed area, repairs to the auditorium roof, and repair of existing brick, concrete, curbs, and sidewalks. Technology devices such as laptops for students and staff, network equipment, and various classroom technology equipment such as projector, sound enhancement, et cetera, and all projects related to any foregoing, going projects. And then the, the maximum principal amount of the bonds is $71,500,000. Maximum term of the bonds and lease, bonds are 15 years, lease term would be 17 years. These are maximums, not what we would, we, right now are assuming it's 10 years, by the way. Estimated interest rate on the bonds at 5.5%, estimated total interest cost for the bonds, $43,177,185. If the board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following the second public hearing on September the 11th, a notice of that determination would be published, and property owners or registered voters would have 30 days following the publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $31,447,442, and the current debt service rate, which is .3120 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase if the bonds are issued and a lease is entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $18,500,000, and the tax rate is .1701 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. However, as existing obligations mature, the anticipated net increase to the debt service fund tax rate is expected to be zero. Please see the attached slide for the debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of tax, of the taxable property within the school corporation, referred to as net assessed value, is approximately .35%. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 12.25%. And that's the end of the narrative.
Thank you for reading.
Now it's opportunity for public comment.
So at this time, I will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. If there's no comments, I will go ahead and close this hearing, and we will resume the board workshop session, meeting. All right. We'll now move on to action items tonight, the Carmel Clay School School Handbooks. Mr. David Woodward.
Thank you. I have nothing additional to add from our last discussion.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Carmel Clay School School Handbooks for 2023, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Greg?
Yeah, I talked about some of these comments last time, but I gave a little more thought and read the two handbooks, the before and the after for the middle school. So my comments are kind of an extension of the last meeting, excuse me. I find that the high school dress code that we're going to be adopting for the middle school is, is a more liberal, in my opinion, more liberal code than what we have in the middle schools now, and I find it rather nebulous in some ways. For example, you know, we, it talks about dress for success, and I'm not sure what that really means. I mean, if I was a parent or a child going to the school, I'm not sure exactly what I would do with dress for success. You know, if I think of there's a book written to that name, it's very formal, kind of a, so I don't think we're talking about formal attire. But I also, you know, things like skin tight clothes, short skirts, short shorts. I'm not sure if that's dressing for success in a school environment. And I was believing it would, excuse me, it would be more effective to require that our students, would it be more effective if we asked them to dress with modesty rather than just for success? I think it'd be a little more clear what, you know, we needed to apply that in specific cases. Some children have bodies that are quite shapely, others do not. Are we being sensitive and inclusive to those that have less shapely bodies, who might not be comfortable wearing revealing clothes? Reading the language of the, actually currently the existing and the proposed one for the middle schools. It talks about private parts being covered with opaque fabric to not reveal undergarments. Excuse me. Do we not find that skin tight leggings, for example, which are called out, are really qualify? Do those really qualifies maintaining common decency and dressing for success, as an example? Don't skin tie clothes reveal private parts? I've heard the argument, we talked about this last time, Mr. Woodward, about having policies that, where the specificity ties our hands, and they're almost too prescriptive and therefore subject to challenge. I understand that comment, and it's a good point, but at what point do we say, do we tell a student or a parent that some shorts or skirts and other clothes are just not appropriate? I mean, where do we draw the line if it's too short or not too short, or too revealing or not? I believe it'd be best to serve our children to require a school dress code that's based on modesty and not sexually suggestive and sexually revealing clothes. Otherwise, we're allowing clothing that distracts and makes some children uncomfortable, particularly with our growing mental health issues. I just find that a concern. I'd rather not have clothes be an issue in the school. I'd like, rather have us focus on academics. It's my comments.
Could you define modesty?
I think I could define it better than dress for success. I think it would be clothes that are not revealing, clothes that are not exhibiting any particular characteristic of a person.
Can you elaborate on that? Because that is very nebulous.
Well, the dress for success is very nebulous.
We're not talking about that right now. We're talking about the comments you just made. Can you please define what non-revealing of characteristics means?
Well, I think modesty would be if, if a young lady has a dress that's very short, or shorts that are very short. I don't find that they're being modest about showing their, their bodies.
But on our meeting, the last time we spoke, and I talked about an instance where a boy's pants might reveal their ankles, and you said you were not referring to boys, only to girls. So you're sexualizing girls. Is a woman's shoulder or a girl's shoulder the only time you find a shoulder provocative?
Well, at the last, I wasn't talking about shoulders. At the last meeting, I mistakenly included pants and the length characteristics. I mean, shorts are not pants. Shorts are allowed. Shorts are fine. Shorts can be very, very short, and I'm just thinking in a school setting, very, very, very short pants and very, very short skirts. I don't think it's a modest way to dress. It's just my, my.
So Greg, I think it's really important to have diverse views on the board, right? And so if you have concerns, this is definitely the forum to express them. I think what team members are asking is that we understand the underlying bias that can be present sometimes when we start to get specific in these policies. For instance, I know some of our teenagers that are male like to wear really skinny jeans, and those might not be appropriate, along with revealing tops and all of those things. So the challenge for our team, our administrative team, is in these policies, where do we draw the line with specificity? Those policies would be really, really long, right? And I also think, when we're thinking about the middle school versus the high school, how do we, how do we justify having a policy for the high school and it not be relevant or be okay for the middle school and vice versa? So these are just like some of the questions I think and concerns.
Yeah, and we talked about that last time. I guess personally, I think that the middle school policy would be better adopted as it stands now at the high school level, rather than the other way around.
To piggyback off of both of yours, and I wasn't here last time. David, could you talk a little bit again, and I apologize if it's, but about how you worked with administrators? I'm assuming you did, with the high school and how they talked about that. And then also, my own thought too is, I feel like this is a great partnership with our parents and how our parents can have a say in the, you know, what their children are wearing and have a partnership with our administrators too. So if you could talk a little bit about, because I'm sure you guys talked about, you know, how do you involve the parents in these situations? Could you maybe touch on those two things?
Absolutely. So first of all, it's very driven by administrators. We review the handbooks every year and decide what we want to tweak and what we don't. So it was driven by the middle school administrators, and it really came as we, they felt it was a little too prescriptive. And so by making it less prescriptive, kind of gave them, they actually would feel a little more empowered. But really, the goal, when you're talking about a handbook, is, can sometimes be viewed as discipline. And what we want to view it as is an opportunity to look at a handbook, feel empowered then to reach out to the parents and say, this is not meeting, as we would say, that common decency, the other language in there, it's interfering with schoolwork or creating disorder, disrupting the educational environment. And really, the, the goal is to prepare them for what's after school. And so we want to work with those parents and work with that student, so that they're, they know what is appropriate dress, not only in our high school, as they go forward to that, but then what's appropriate after that.
Thank you. I'll just give my comments, and then we can kind of give other members is, I am so thankful that we include the administrators and our teachers who are in the classroom every day, knowing, you know, what interferes, what doesn't. And then I think even more so, I'm very happy about our, you know, working with our parents. You know, having a high schooler and a middle schooler right now, you know, I know that it's constantly, you know, when we're school shopping, and what are you going to wear, and are you going to leave with that, and all these conversations that we're having with our teenagers. But I like that I get to have those conversations, that I'm the one talking to my daughter, and I'm the one talking to my son about these things, and working with, you know, the schools if there's a problem. So those are just kind of my thoughts on this particular topic. And then I know it kind of took that away, so I'll kind of go down again. Any other comments from the board? Kristen?
Oh, go ahead.
I, this is just kind of, again, piggybacking on, the last time I kind of made a similar comment that I appreciated that administration lets the parents know and has that, has that relationship, because that's, you know, that's what we want, is it's the parent's decision what their children are wearing. How does that happen in, in the middle schools and high schools if there is, you know, a handbook issue?
Yeah, absolutely. So typically, it's reported to the admin by either a teacher or by a student. And then that phone call be made to the, to the parent. This is what's happened. This is what the student is wearing. How do we feel this is appropriate or not appropriate and have that conversation?
So it is more of an open conversation with the, the parents and then the student, bringing the student into that as well?
Correct, with referral to the handbook. Here's, here's what we expect.
Louise?
I feel like I almost forgot my comment. Kristen, thanks a lot. No, okay. Oh, my gosh, loud, okay.
Are you awake?
Okay. You know, being the parent of both a female student and a male student, there's plenty of days where one child will leave out of the house, and I don't get to plenty of days where one child will leave out of the house and I don't get to see what they have on. So it's good to know that someone from the school will reach out. I also think about, oh, my gosh, kids are so smart. They always find some kind of way to get around a policy. You know, well, you said I couldn't do X, and I didn't do X, kind of thing. So I think this does give us more of an opportunity to pull students aside. I don't think that it's going to create a situation where students have more liberty, per se. I think it is about having more dialogue and more of an opportunity to have the conversation. But that's just my perspective.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay. All right. We will now take a vote. All those in favor of the board approving the Carmel Clay School handbook, school handbooks for 2023, 2024, please signify by saying aye. Aye for those opposed. One, four to one. Motion passed. All right. We'll now move on to our next action item, the change orders for West Clay Elementary Playground. It is recommended that the board trust... Oh, I will go to Mr. McMichael.
Well, thank you. This one requires a little explanation. So this past, this summer, we developed two more rooms for early childhood, early childhood program at Woodbrook. The enrollment in that program has grown such that, that we needed to add two rooms. And so, and that decision was made in the spring, so we didn't have much time to do it between then and when school started. So, so we looked to existing contractors that were able and capable of doing this work, and we got quotes and so forth. And so the contractor selected happens to be the contractor on the West Clay playground. And so from that contractor's standpoint, I mean, the contractor has a contract for that project. So what we're doing here is we're providing an ad change order. Has nothing to do with the playground, but it has everything to do with his contract. So we're expanding his contract by $149,000. And it happens that that contract is, is the West Clay Playground project. So this has nothing to do, other than that's the only connection to West Clay. And then secondly, that project is in our 2023 facility projects, which totals $36 million. And so, not to minimize the $149,000, but we will, our intent would be to pay for this out of that $36 million. And it may actually go to the, to the budget, if you will, that was assigned for West Clay. The playground's only part of that project. The other part will be this spring and summer when we put new finishes in the building. So, so if there's enough funds there, the most simplistic way to do it is just leave it there and, because it's all going to, it's going to get paid out of that $36 million. And so that's the explanation, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the below listed change orders for the West Clay Elementary Playground renovations? The Woodbrook Project is an ad change order for the contractor's current contract with the playground project. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just a point of clarification. So the, the budget is coming out of the $36 million that's already been approved. It's just, we're spending it maybe on this, where we might have spent it on something else, but it's just a, it's not an adder to...
It's not, that's correct. It is not, it is not an add. And, and with projects of like $36 million, you know, we're finally selling bonds based on estimates typically. And so, so by the time we get to the end and are ready to award bids and so forth, it's pretty close. But there's contingency allowance, for example. We usually put three percent at least in a, in a project. So you think three percent of $36 million, we, we not likely we'll use all that contingency, but we also don't want to run out of money. So, so, and that's also why we have contingencies, because there are things that come up in projects. So, so in the context of that whole $36 million, you know, we, we feel comfortable that we'll have $149,000 available.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of approving the West Clay Elementary Playground renovations, which is really the Woodbrook Project, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. All right. We'll now move on to our next change order, the Carmel High School Performing Arts Addition and Renovations. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is, actually is a Carmel High School Performing Arts project. And this is an ad change order of $92,651.16, but about $60,000 of that will be, is backcharged to a different, to another contractor that was not performing on the job. So this contractor did that $60,000 worth of work, and then that'll be, the original contractor's contract will be reduced by that amount. So it nets out at about $30,000.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the listed change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Addition and Renovation? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. All those in... Greg?
I was giving them a chance first, so. Roger, if you could just explain a little bit about the design there that's, that's driving the most of this, it looks like?
Yes. If you've been in an auditorium since it's been renovated, there are kind of, kind of bircher brown panels, they're acoustical panels on the sidewalls. They were, they were too low, and we were concerned that, you know, somebody would hit their head on them, so they had to be raised. And of course, there's a lot, a lot of them. And doing that takes, is more than what it might sound. So that, that's what that change order is for, or that, that change order, that's what that's for.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of approving the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center Addition and Renovation change orders, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to the discussion topics for the evening, the wireless communications facility. Mr. McMichael.
Yes, there's a, an attachment to this. So let me clarify a couple of things before I begin. But essentially, this is a discussion item. We're not asking for action. And so what's attached is referred to as like a term agreement. That's also not a contract, per se. And so, because a number of things have to, would have to happen before this became a reality. One is, is that the city, of course, is involved, and they, this tower company would have to receive approval from the city. They, they will, if we don't have a strong objection then tonight, then they'll want to come here. They're, they're in Columbus, Ohio, so they, they'll want to come here and actually see the site and, you know, kind of check it out. So going forward, before this actually would happen, there would be a contract presented to the board that would actually, you know, approve the details. And by the way, in, in this current document, it, it talks about a confidentiality waiver, and that won't be in there because it's not permitted under Indiana law to begin with. So this, this would become a public document. So if somebody asked for it, they would, would receive it. And they're aware of that, so that's not an issue. So that's kind of the background. Now, the cell tower that's, location that's being proposed is, is in our, on our Shelburne Road property. So, and I'm sure you're aware that there's a creek that goes through there, and then the, what looks, well, it is a Dad's Club development, but that, we're the Dad's Club, that's actually school property. And so their initial thought was to put it up where the, near, where the transportation facility is at. I felt that was too close to the neighbors to the south. And it's just thinking, this is a tall tower. It's not one like you see in downtown Carmel. It's a hundred feet tall or whatever. So, so we looked another place, and, and, which is on the east side of the creek, which would be seen as where the Dad's Club is at. So there's a gravel drive that goes back there and runs pretty close to the creek. And you have a map in your packet, but the tower would be located essentially along the creek. And, and far enough to the north that I don't believe the neighbors to the south could see it, just the sightline. There is wooded area, but this is taller than the trees. So my feeling on it personally is that everybody wants a cellphone, but nobody wants a tower in their backyard. And so it becomes a dilemma in a community like Carmel. There's not all that much open space. And, and, and the school district, what is open, a significant amount of it either belongs to the school or, or the Parks Department or another governmental entity. And so trying to weigh, you know, that whole issue and what's in the interest of the overall community. And so if you live on the west side and need service for your cellphone, it'd probably be in your interest. And so, and then we may actually benefit from it, from it as well with, because we would, we would, if we wanted to put something on this tower, like for our transportation radios or something like that, we would expect, that would be included in the conversations that we would, and ultimately a contract that we would have with the company. So, it's financially, and I, right from the beginning, I said, we wouldn't be persuaded for, you know, $24,000 or whatever, if we didn't think that was the right thing to do. So it's not, it's not the, we'll take the $24,000, but, but it's not because of the money. It's because of the, if it's considered a, you know, a benefit for the community.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one to start. The money that, if it did go through all the things and was approved, where would that go? Like, fund wise? I'm not, no, we'd know where it would be spent on, but...
Yeah, we're, we're not to that point yet. We, I, I did throw an idea out there, and I'll probably throw it out there again. But typically, if we received, in the context of our 250 some million dollars a year, we received what we'd call miscellaneous revenue of $24,000, it would, it would go, in this case, it'd likely go in the education fund or someplace where we'd certainly make good use of it, wherever it went. However, our schools, our principals, administration at the school is having some financial challenges now because the revenue that they have historically received from, like, the, they call it the Coke money, but, you know, the, the agreement we have with, with Coke and now Pepsi, that, 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 the schools, they receive the commission off of that. Now, they cannot spend it, if, if the machines that are out available for students, they cannot, they have to spend that on students. But they, we also receive what we call exclusivity money or upfront, kind of an upfront if we only use Pepsi products. And that's distributed, most of it's distributed to the schools, and that they can use for adults. And by that, I mean, if they, they want to recognize their teachers, or if they're, they want to, you know, the back to school breakfast kind of thing. Those kinds of, of, I think, team building and appreciation type things. And so, so one thought would be that this money could be made available because there's other funds you can't, you know, you can only use so much for that type of thing. And so this would be money that would not be tax dollars for that purpose, kind of like the beverage money. And, but they certainly would make good use of it. And, and, again, it's $24,000, not to minimize it, but it's not going to change our financial, you know, position, whatever we use it for. So that would, but we haven't really had much discussion about that because this is all kind of an if and maybe thing.
Yeah, it's, we're definitely at the very, very beginning.
Yes.
But I do love the idea. I think, you know, we, our main focus is our students, but I do, we're also a very large employer.
Yes.
And so supporting our employees is also very important. So I like your brain.
One last comment on that. Just, schools are allowed to spend $12,500 on what's called promotion of the school district. Now, it doesn't matter whether you're Elwood or Carmel, it's $12,500. So you can see, as the eighth or ninth largest school district in the state, our $12,000 doesn't go as far as most of the school districts in the state. So this kind of would help that situation.
Wonderful. Thank you. Other questions? Jenny?
Thank you for that report. I know that these contracts can be lucrative for smaller businesses. And I know that the west side, in particular, the towers, the companies that do these, broker these deals, are searching fervently for a place to go. Because I've had people talk to me at the funeral home, but it was too far west. So the Shelbourne area is really where they want to be. Is because it's so landlocked and because they need to be in that area desperately, is there any possibility of negotiating that lease term agreement for a higher dollar amount?
Yeah, I kind of already did that.
Okay.
[laughing] Surprised. We also increased, you know, the increase per year. I think they had it at two percent, and I kicked it up to three. But we're not finished yet, so I may feel like it ought to be four.
And there aren't any public health issues emitting from a tower, anything that would cause harm to the community from the emissions?
Yeah, that would be a long discussion. I think we've all read somewhere along the line that, you know, people, and certainly we've had neighbors concerned about that, by the way. Years ago, there was a proposal for a tower at Town Meadow, and, and we didn't get to the point of recommending it, but the neighbors got to a point of complaining about it before we recommended it. So, so there is that concern. I don't hear, personally, I've not, I don't hear as much as we did early on. And so there's been a lot of time for, to study that and so forth. And, and so I, I think we're pretty solid on that. And here's also an area where there is, you know, there are students, certainly our kids and the dad, you know, kids participating in Dad's Club, but they're not living there and they're not there, you know, like all day.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you.
We'll now turn over to policy first readings. Dr. Dudley with the first reading of policy 4330, the use of medications.
Yes, thank you. So this policy, the draft proposal changes to this policy are due to changes in the legislation from the last legislative session. But school districts are now able to fill prescriptions for medications to use in an emergency, in a life-threatening emergency. And so this would be stocking medications, epinephrine and naloxacan, where we would stock those in our nursing areas. They'd be stored in a secure area, and they could be administered to students, employees, or visitors in, to save their life. And so these were changes in this policy.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Dudley? Okay. Thank you. We will now go on to the first reading of policy 4362.01, anti-bullying.
Yes, thank you. And so this policy also is precipitated from changes in our legislative session. We had a very robust, as you can see, anti-bullying policy, but there were just a few changes that Mr. Woodward proposed to put into our anti-bullying policy due to legislative changes.
Thank you. Any questions on the anti-bullying policy at this time? Greg?
Could you just summarize for us the, the changes in that?
Sure. So the changes in the anti-bullying is that any materials that are used for bullying prevention or suicide prevention programs, parents would be able to review those materials. They could contact and review those materials, which we already had in place in practice. It's listed in our policy, but we were doing that anyway. The other one states that anonymous reporting is available on the Carmel Clay website. We already had that in practice. It was put into the policy. But it was already, our Stop It app is already on our website. And then the safety of the victim in the bullying incidences would be the top priority for intervention. Again, that was in practice, and it was just stated in the policy now. But all of those things that, the changes that are proposed for this policy have already been in our practices.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. And the last one for tonight is the first reading of policy 7510, the use of school facilities.
Yes, thank you. And so this policy, these changes were brought about by Mr. McMichael. In our policies, it's not necessarily changing the policy, but it's more in helping to clarify the policy. The facilities may be, people may petition to use our facilities for entities or organizations, but not by individual use. And recently, we've had individuals asking to use the facilities for like maybe a family reunion or a celebration of life as an individual. But our policy is that only organizations or entities can do that, not individual use. But our policy is that only organizations or entities can do that, not individual use in our school policies, or our, using our facilities.
Any questions? Greg?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Earlier this year, there was a, a coach that wanted to, trying to remember the details, wanted to do a, bring some basketball team in to some kids that couldn't afford some of the other programs, Carmel Dad's Club, or something like that. Would this allow them to now use those facilities or not?
No, actually, that's, that's a good example of why we're trying, wanting to clarify the language. That, that example was at Forestale, actually. And, and it was, as you described, it was, it was a well-intentioned individual that wanted to have their own basketball team or whatever. I think it was a basketball team. And so, and that, we don't get so many weddings and things, but we get lots of coaches. And, and so, all of our recreational athletics, for example, goes, our relationship, as, as you know, is with the Carmel Dad's Club. So they provide activities for about twelve-thousand kids, and they have hundreds of volunteer coaches. And so occasionally what happens is a coach gets upset with the Dad's Club, so they, they wanna go take their team and do their, their own thing. And so if we were to permit that, so we deal with one entity, and that also includes, of course, with, when you're talking about twelve-thousand kids, there are problems after school, just as there are during the day. And so, and we deal with one entity on everything. And, again, using the Dad's Club as an example. Same thing with the Carmel Swim Club, by the way, or something similar. But, so, so, that's, that's the, kind of the idea of entities. And, and that's not a change. It's, it's been that way, but, but we find ourselves, you know, we wanna elaborate a little bit because we have these conversations. And, and the Dad's Club, by the way, does provide, kind of their equivalent of free and reduced lunch. And so if, if there's financial need, they will, they respond to that, and, and they, they receive donations. And of course, their money comes from either fees or donations. And so the donation part is big in that operation, because unlike most communities that have recreational activities, typically through a governmental entity, so you have a hundred thousand taxpayers or whatever it is, you know, paying for that, their programs are paid by the parents of the twelve-thousand kids, along with, you know, donations that they receive. So, so, but they do provide for and recognize financial need as a part of their program.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this policy? All right. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We'll now move on to our reports. Back to you again, student data.
Great, thank you. So this evening, I would like to share information on our advanced placement scores that our students completed last spring. We finally received all of our scores back from the college board, and we are very excited about these scores and the achievement of our students. So, as you can see from this slide, over the five-year span from two thousand eighteen, nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the percentage of our students that are taking at least one or more AP courses has increased. So we're, you know, we wanna make sure that our students have opportunities to take those rigorous courses, and advanced placement is one of those opportunities that we offer at Carmel High School, for our students to take those very rigorous courses, and also then to be prepared for college and career as well. As you may recall from one of our board reports in the past, we talked about the pathways, the college pathways, and we wanted to make sure that our students all have that opportunity for, after school, after high school, they are prepared to go to that next step. And also making sure our students have opportunities for those rigorous courses is also a part of our strategic plan. It's one of our goals in our strategic plan, and AP also fits that bill to help make sure that those students have those opportunities. And we wanna continue to increase and make sure that we're inclusive and have more students take us up on those opportunities. And we're excited to show that a higher percentage of our students, so we have more students that are taking the AP courses. And, so you can take an AP course, you don't, the students are not required to take the AP exam. It's, you know, it's kind of a waste of why you wouldn't take the AP exam, because you need to take the exam to get the college credit when you're going to a university or a college. So you'd want to take the exam. But we have, almost all of our students that take the AP courses also take the exams. And so this past year, we gave over three, or we gave three thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven AP exams this past spring, which is, as you can see, quite an increase from our two thousand eighteen, nineteen. It's almost an increase of almost seven hundred additional tests. And we are quite sure that we will go over quite significantly the four thousand mark this spring, because we added a few AP courses, and we have, our students are enrolling in those AP courses. And so, it's exciting to see. The high school does a fabulous job, because the students have to take those AP tests on a specific day. Different tests are given on different days. Mr. McMichael, actually, we had to rent tables and chairs this past year to have our students, yes, to take the AP test for the logistics of it, because you can imagine to have, you know, almost five thousand, or fifty-two-hundred students in the building, and then have this many tests given on multiple days is quite the logistic piece. And our high school does a fabulous job. Mrs. Valerie Pugh, our, one of our assistant principals, does a fabulous job of heading those logistics up, too. It's a, it's a little bit nerve-wracking at that time, because you wanna make sure the students are all where they need to be, and she does a fabulous job of heading that up, as well as the rest of the staff at Carmel High School. So as you can see, more of our students were giving more tests, and this is the number of tests that we give. And you can see, there's quite a bit. Our students are taking exams from everything, from English, social studies, world languages, science, math. And so we have quite a few different AP tests that our students do take throughout the spring. So as the number of students taking the courses and the number of tests given, our achievement on those tests has also risen. So not only do we have more students taking the courses and more students taking the tests, we are very happy to report that the number of students that score a three or higher on the tests that they take has increased over this five-year span. Because you would think, in some cases, you might theorize that if you have more students taking them, you might get lower achievement. But our achievement continues to go up, as far as the students, the students' achievement continues to go up, even though the number of tests also goes up. And so you can see, we've risen from, you know, one thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-eight students back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen to one thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven. So, you know, over two-hundred-and-fifty more students scored a three or higher on those tests. And the percentage of those students, as our, our actual enrollment, has decreased, but the percentage of students overall from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three has risen as well as the number of students that score a three or higher. So in addition with the AP, there's some other awards that our students have the opportunity to receive. So we had two-hundred-and-ninety-nine AP scholars, and these awards are all given through the college board. And in order to be named an AP scholar, the students earn a score of three or more on at least three exams, and they're an AP scholar. So we had two-hundred-and-ninety-nine AP scholars. We had, had a hundred-and-forty AP scholars with honor. And these students, to be awarded this honor, they receive an average score of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken, and the scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So we have some students that are taking five or six AP exams over the course of their college, or their high school career. We have students that take AP exams as early as ninth grade, all the way through their senior year. But the majority of the students are juniors and seniors. We had four-hundred-and-twenty AP scholars with distinction. And so this honor is awarded to students who receive an average score of at least three-point-five on all AP exams taken, and the scores of three or higher on five or more exams. And then we also had a hundred-and-eighty-two students earn the AP Capstone diploma. And the Capstone diploma is awarded to students that score a three or higher on, in AP seminar and AP research. Those are two courses where the students learn how to conduct research, and then their second year, when they take the research course, they actually conduct that research. And then they present their research as part of their exam for the AP research. And they also have to take those two courses, earn a three or higher, and then they also have to take four additional AP exams of their choosing to receive the Capstone diploma. And we had a hundred-and-eighty-two students that received that. So we're very excited with our students' achievement in AP and offering them these rigorous opportunities, and also the opportunity to gain college credit as well, taking the different opportunities. This is, you know, Carmel High School is one of the few high schools that has such a robust offering of different AP courses. We're very fortunate that we have such a comprehensive high school that our students have these opportunities. With that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions from the board? Louise?
Yeah, so I'm excited to see that we're continuing to improve, or not improve, expand the number of students that are participating in our AP programs, and that our, our students' results seem to be consistently, that they're successful in these exams. I'm also wondering if you can give us just a little bit of insight into how we track those students that may not be AP, but like, middle-of-the-road, and those that are underperforming. What is the way that we kind of keep an eye on those students, and then later, kind of give how they're doing, or what we're, how we're doing with offering them supports, kind of thing?
Yeah, great question, Greg. So one of the things, there, you know, first mention something with AP, and then I'll talk about making sure we're supporting all of our students. One of the tools that college board has is called AP Potential. And so we, we want to prepare all of our students to be college and/or career-ready. And the AP Potential tool helps us to look at students' PSAT scores. And so all of our students in ninth grade, tenth grade, and eleventh grade take the PSAT, and it takes those scores, and it looks at what is the potential for students to take different types of AP courses that they would be successful in based on their PSAT scores? So our counselors have that tool where they can, we may have some students that are not necessarily thinking, oh, I could be an AP student, and we wanna make sure that we're reaching out and looking at those students and saying, hey, have you thought about this? Are you interested in this type of a course? To help them to, you know, counsel them into possibly taking either an AP course or an IB course or a dual-credit course. And so our counselors work with all of our students, and they look at, here, when they do their course selection, they wanna look at, here are their, their grades. They talk with the students, what are your interests in? We have, you know, our CTE pathways that we've talked about. But how are we making sure we are helping our students and our parents, per se, understand, you know, what's available for the students? I know when my son was in, he was going into tenth grade, and it was actually his English teacher that called me and said, hey, he really needs to be taking Honors English. Now I talked to him, and he doesn't want to, but he needs to be. And so, and that's, I mean, that's the other piece. So it's the counselors and also their teachers that are making sure, how are we making sure we're pushing our students into taking things that they're interested in and that they'll also be successful in, and keeping track of their data? So it's the, both the counselors and teachers.
That's good. That's good. That answers half. It's also the underperforming students. So I think about students that may have a C, and, you know, they really are capable of having a B, or, you know, and, and even those that are failing. But I, my heart is with, how do we get to students before they're failing, kind of thing? So, how do we, and if the question is, let me think on that and get back to you, that's fine, or the response to the question is that?
Well, and, but one part, I would say, is it's looking at, so, because grades will measure, you know, they measure a lot of things. It's really supposed to measure their learning, but we also know there's a lot of pieces that go into grading, and we're working on those equitable practices in grading. We're working on improving that as well, where the grade is truly measuring the learning. But another piece, so let's say we do have a student that is a C student or a D student, making sure that we are looking at the student's individual scores, so their individual PSAT scores, their scores from going from eighth grade into ninth grade, looking at their I-Learn scores, where they take those scores. When they do take SAT in eleventh grade, looking at those scores. So you may have, you may see students that are underperforming as far as grade-wise, and it's not necessarily what they're learning. It could be based on what they, you know, they didn't turn in their assignments, or they didn't put their effort in this area.
Right.
So making sure that we are looking at those individual scores of students in other areas of assessments. We also have, you know, students, when you do look at the grades, we have some students that do really well on exams, but then they don't turn in their assignments. They don't do their work on their projects. So are they learning the materials, and do they need to be pushed into more rigorous courses, even though they might only have a B or a C in those areas? And so that's really looking at the individual students and what's making up those different scores.
Got you, okay. And I also think, you know, team, wouldn't it be phenomenal if we had some kind of, either tracking or program for students that are middle-of-the-road, so where we have this kind of data for those, so we can tout how we've helped students that are, you know, they might not be an AP, but they're in, you know, the normal-level classes, and we've seen, kind of tracked their progress and improvement over time? I just think it would be great if we had some kind of...
And, and one of the pieces we do have is, in our Pinnacle data, is our data warehouse, which is available. It's for our administrators, for our teachers, and our team, our data team is absolutely fabulous. Actually, Dr. Bearsford challenged them two years ago, I believe. It was to do exactly what you're talking about of, here we have, you know, what, what are the different indicators of students that might be at risk?
Okay.
And how can we pull that down to have kind of a dashboard of, here are these students? And so we have those pieces in place where our administrators and our teachers have them right at their fingertips, where they can say, okay, we need to now support this student, because they might be falling through the cracks.
Would they, would this be something we could kind of send the, the team a report on? Or like, give us line of sight into what that looks like, how we track that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do some pieces where we can kind of blur the data out, but we can kind of show you how that is used.
Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna add something?
You guys are really paying attention to where I put my microphone. No, I'm just really excited about it. We've been trying to determine what data points you could piece together to have an early alert or early warning when a student starts failing or going off, you know, not going, you know, where there's a drop one way or another. And there's a lot of factors to it. It could be attendance, it can be grades, it can be test scores. And so the idea is, how can we put all that together into a dashboard where we could, at our fingertips? I would say we're not fully built out on it yet, but, but we're going in the right direction. And, and I can actually, we could probably put together more of a description of what it is without using, giving, you know, without giving out student data, student information like that.
Yeah, that would be great, because I know we care about all our students. It's just sometimes we don't have line of sight into how all of our students are doing, and the resources and things that we have in play to help those students that, you know, can get to the next level, kind of thing. So that'd be great. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I just had a comment. One of the things, and you kind of mentioned, our counselors are so fantastic. So one of the things that I love is, I have a sophomore, and last year she was just in, like, nine, English nine, and she's gonna take, this she is, she's taking Honors English. And so in talking with the counselor, which they're really great if parents wanna meet with them and everything, because I was just trying to, you know, ask questions. And one of the things they really talked about is, not only her, because they said that maybe next year, you know, she could do an AP class. And what I loved is they're like, but it's how she feels about it. It doesn't, they didn't really focus too much on grades. It was like, does she feel like she's keeping up? Does she feel confident? Does she feel good? Is it some, is it a struggle? And I love that that additional piece of the conversation is, it wasn't like, well, if she gets an A, then she can do AP, or if she gets a B, it was like, how does she feel about it? Is it stressing her out? Is it taking too much time? And so anyway, I just love that, that moment where it was, you know, that whole child perspective of more than just like, oh, we wanna have four-hundred-and-twenty AP... of more than just like, oh, we want to have four hundred and twenty AP scholars with distinction. You know, like it was really just how is that, you know, that student doing? So fantastic work, Carmel High School counselors.
Any other, Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what Louise brought up. I think it would be good if perhaps we have a workshop or something in the near future that would talk more about the others that might be getting left behind or what, what we are doing or what we can do to help them. Including like the topic of grading for equity, that's been brought as a concern to me from some parents. And I think it'd be good to do, you know, talk about that a lot more and, and, and so it's good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Our monthly financial update, Mr. McMichael.
While I'm pulling this up, I want to say that it's difficult for me to follow Amy. You noticed how her PowerPoint looks. And I don't know if you noticed, but she's also color coordinated. But I do want you to know that I am color coordinated with mine. It just happens to be black and white. And, but finance guy is kind of thinking black and white, so I just, I'm trying to do the best I can. Yeah, magenta, that's right. Okay, so this is real, on a fiscal basis, this is, we're at the end of July. And so we're just kind of getting started with this, this twelve-month period. But in our, our education referendum and rainy day fund, our ending balance was twelve point one million. And we compare that to last year, which was eleven point, or no, I'm sorry. Yeah, eleven point one. So it's more and it needs to be more because as our budget grows, you know, as a percentage, we need, need more dollars to maintain or incre, and we'd like to increase that percentage over time to about twelve percent rather than eight. So we're, so far at least, we're kind of moving in that direction a bit. In our operations fund, it's, it's, it's not as comparable or as credible at least as, to compare as, as the education fund. But, but we did end up, July, at just over four million dollars. And you can see here that last, last July, it was five million dollars. But again, we, it depends on the timing of when we were doing projects and, and those kind of things. Then our rainy day fund, and you can see here, generally, we're not, it, it's mostly there to provide for unforeseen circumstances and also contributes to our cash balance. So that when we're selling bonds and being considered with standard and pores, they want us to have a little more cash balance than we've had. And, but they, they include funds in a, in a rainy day fund. So our intent is to increase this fund. We'll likely make a recommendation to transfer some operations fund as we get later into this year, which is what we have done in the past in the rainy day fund. So I think with that, I'll respond to questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
I do think you could step your game up with your slides, but, okay.
Amy said she would help me, but, you know, there's a price to pay.
I'll be waiting with bated breath. Okay, so on the education fund.
I require a lot of help.
Can't be great at everything, right? Okay, so on the education fund and operations fund. So I see we're at forty-three percent of budget for education and forty-one percent for operations. I think that's pretty, pretty good, right? For this being August, is this percentage, is this, does this correlate well with the last couple of years? You know, not thinking about COVID, is that where we generally fall?
Yes, it's, it's in the range.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a, a quick question on the operations fund. The, the purchase services and the supplies and property seem to be spending at a little higher rate. I mean, forty-two percent is remaining, right? So ideally, we see everything at forty-two percent on that, that far right column. But I, I just noticed that purchase services and supplies and property are tracking a little higher than that. In others, we have, you know, less, more overspent where we should be at this point in time. Is that something to be concerned about or are we okay there, you think?
No, I don't think so. Purchase services includes utilities, for example. And as you can imagine, that, that's an example of an expenditure that's not even every twelve months. And, and so now we're going into fall, or as we go into fall, we'll, you know, we'll use less and less air conditioning. But also we, until it gets colder, we won't use much heat either. So, so that's an example where those, those expenses will, will vary from depending on the time of the year. Also with supplies and, and property, that is, as the name implies, that is for various types of supplies. But, and then some of the, the property could be like repair to, to the property. Could be, you know, grasp maintenance or something like that. So, so that, both of those line items are, i, i, in fact, if you compare that to salary and benefits, you see they're kind of right on track because as we've said many times, salaries very, you know, every two weeks. Whereas, whereas the non-personnel, like the purchase services and the supplies and property, it's not as, you know, it's not evenly divided over the twelve months.
Can the rainy day fund be used against either the operations or the education fund? Or is it limited to just one?
Rainy day can be used for about anything you want to use it for. And years ago, when it was established, the board also approved a resolution, which gave a very broad use, which is what we, you know, we recommended that. And so, but as it relates to operations, generally, we would be, like, well, during COVID, for example, we gave a, a, what we called a COVID stipend to employees. And that, we use rainy day funds for that. So indirectly, that's something that otherwise would have been an education fund expense for salaries. So it'd be more typical that, that those funds would be used for something along the lines of salary or benefits. And as I said, if, you know, that rainy day here really got started when we had a state shortfall. And, and so that was a very unforeseen circumstance. And, and we didn't have any, we didn't have it at that point, but we, we, we established it after that. But, so there will be, just as the name implies, and that, and we, we look at it that way because, you know, if it is literally kind of a rainy day, something really unforeseen. And sometimes it's like the COVID stipend where, you know, that wasn't something that, you know, we didn't, we decided to do that, but it wasn't, A, it wasn't a recurring cost. And that's important because rainy day is a, is a buildup of cash. And, and, you know, I, we have to be very careful that you don't use those funds for a recurring expense. Because it's like using your savings account to pay your mortgage. That's going to be a problem at some point. And, and then other times, it's just something like the state shortfall that happens that we're not in control of. It's something unforeseen significantly and, and it's, you know, significant. So, so it's, that, that's why it's treated as part of our overall cash and cash balance, which is kind of like the equivalent of our savings account and for unforeseen circumstances. Eight percent, by the way, is more than coincidental, but that equals one month. So it seems like one or two months of reserves. You know, at home, they want you to have, what, six months or something? So, so we think in terms of a minimum of one month is the eight percent. And then we're, we'd like to get it to about twelve percent. I'm still not recommending like sixteen or twenty percent, which some districts have a higher, you know, much higher percentage than we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. McMichael. We will now move on to the Carmel Clay Parks Department reports. Kristin?
And I apologize, I don't have this to share on the screen, but I'm just going to kind of explain the data as part of the Parks Board. I kind of get updates on some of the things associated with the schools. And one of the things, if you don't know, we have ESE programs in our elementary schools, and that's extended school enrichment. So in a partnership with Carmel Clay Parks Department, we offer after-school care to students. And at the end of every semester, at the end of the year, they do kind of a parent survey of their satisfaction with the program. And they were pretty pleased to share with me that the data starts in two thousand and eighteen and then was through last spring, so the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. And it shows a really decent, a consistent increase in parent satisfaction. And the different areas were that they provide a caring atmosphere, that the program provides a safe environment, that staff has built a relationship with their child, the child looks forward to going to ESE. There's an exciting atmosphere for drop-off and pickup, that the program provides a positive experience, and that parent suggestions and comments have been well-received and taken into consideration. That the parents have been kept well-informed of what is going on with the program. In that the staff of ESE, the Extended School Enrichment, have handled any matters that happen with, with individual children and have taken care of those in a professional manner and included the parents. And so on a scale from one to five, the averages were from four point five-six to four point eight. So I, I, and, and they started, you know, back in two thousand and eighteen, some threes and into the, into the lower fours. And so definitely, I feel that's something that they are using to make sure that the program is meeting parent expectations and providing a safe environment for students.
Thank you. Any questions for Kristin? Good. Thank you. We will now move on to the Carmel Redevelopment Commission. Greg?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a lot of slides here that I will not show, but unless there's a lot of interest in looking at them all. So anyway, what I wanted to do was talk about my role as a board member, acting as an actual commissioner on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission, a non-voting member. But I'm going to speak to what I think is the value of having a school board trustee on the CRC. And, but I will not address the merits and controversies of the whole redevelopment process because that could be a rather lengthy thing that I would not find myself particularly qualified for. But I'll talk a little bit more about my role here in a bit. The, just real quickly, redevelopment departments are typically set up by local cities. And the idea is to provide a means for clearing, planning redevelopment areas that need redevelopment, which used to be called blighted areas. And that was the original intention back in the fifties when they came up with some of this process. But to really have a planned economic development of under or developing areas that, that are used by the public and consequently uses public money and allows to be spent partnering with private entities and private property to be actually acquired by the redevelopment. So Carmel has a redevelopment department. We call it the Redevelopment Commission, CRC. So I'll be using that acronym throughout this. It is intended to boost economic development, but it also allows the local governments to really control the development. So if, if a city like Carmel has a good foundational plan, they can really take it to the next level of development. It's also intended for cities that do not have, or locality that do not have a, a good plan to get things kind of started. It uses a thing called tax incremental financing, TIF, is what people like to call it, to direct the new development through incremental taxes. I'll talk more about that. So the commission's made up of six members, five are voting, then there's me. And I have a two-year term. Three members were appointed by the mayor, three members were appointed by the city council. And it's essentially, it's a board like this. It oversees the governing of the actual redevelopment efforts of the city. Value I see of having a, a school board trustee on the CRC is that it allows us to be represented in, in the development process in the city. And I see that primarily in two areas. One is staying abreast of impacts to revenues, which we get from tax levies based on the assessed property values. We'll talk more about that. And also we can keep an eye on potential future changes to enrollment to the district. Enrollment impact is an interesting question. I've been asking that. I've been on, on the commission for eight months now. And there is not really a concerted effort to worry so much about that. But I've had a lot of discussions with the, the director of the, the CRC. And what I found is here is that there really isn't a detailed enrollment study of the high-density residential development going on that I've been able to find. And I know it's a lot of concern with some residents and not others. But, you know, the question is, how does it affect traffic? How does it affect school facility, school planning? So it's a, it's a very valid question to understand. What I found out, though, looking at a couple complexes that were done recently, most of these units are, are typically one-bedroom or they're studio units. They're not really desirable for families. They're not like garden apartments, I think, are more a typical design, like Gramercy is typically more designed for families. So the example I had between a couple of these residences, that there was six hundred and thirty-three units inside them. And out of those six hundred and thirty-three residences, there was only twenty-four school-aged children. So a very small portion seems to be what's going on there. We have about a thousand done now, a thousand units are completed. So that, I estimate that, of course, to be about thirty-eight students. So again, it's pretty small. We've talked before, and Roger's brought this up, that the, the enrollment at Carmel Clay Schools has seen a decline of about five hundred since two thousand and twenty. And with kindergarten being down about ten percent since two thousand and twenty. And I believe that was not a surprise based on the enrollment forecast that was done a few years ago, two, two thousand and eighteen or so. So evidently, bringing these units and hasn't had an upward impact that can at least be seen. I am asking to get the number of units that are under construction, that are approved to be built and are planning to be built, to see if, what we might learn from that. The next number of slides are, were put together by Henry Meszczewski. He's the executive director of the CRC. And it helps explain TIF and some things a little better. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because TIF is very complicated. I could very quickly run out of my expertise on that. But it is a key to funding the redevelopment process. So it is important to understand it in that regard. It's a very popular tool. It's very popular in the Midwest. There's a lot of advocates and critics. I'm not going to get into that debate tonight. And, but we need to look at it, we need to understand it short-term or long-term. I think the, the school district does. The, so what, what essentially happens is that there's an underdeveloped or an undeveloped piece of property that has some potential that the city might see and they might have in their plan that would be good to build a particular structure. But the marketplace itself may not necessarily come up with that as a solution. And if, if you don't, if cities don't control what goes in through the whole city bounds, they may find that the marketplace has put in projects that may benefit the developer short-term, but not the community long-term. So essentially, TIF is that incremental taxation that can be recognized if, from what a particular parcel is, has at, at a starting point. And if a new development was put in there, is designed like, is, is desired by the city, it would generate a lot more property tax. The assessed value would go up a lot. And the idea is that they borrow against those anticipated property tax receipts and they can issue bonds against it and provide funding for the city and provide funding to work with the developer and, and make these projects happen that otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't occur. Typically, a TIF has a duration of about twenty-five years. Ours are, I think, all twenty-five years. You'll notice in here, it talks about, I don't know, it's pretty tiny, the, the base taxes or the taxes that that property generates without the development. And those tax, that assessed value rate is continued to be taxed through the duration of the TIF. And then when the TIF expires, all that property tax goes to the normal entities and locality that would get that tax otherwise, like the schools. The one exception to that are referendums like the operating fund or operating referendum and the safety referendum. Those are monies that voters have voted to have on top of any of the capped tax rates. So the schools benefit from TIF development by that significantly increased value of assessed property. And, and that's, that's been the desire from the city planning. The, the base rates, unfortunately, they do not grow during that. The, the base rates, unfortunately, they do not grow during that life of the TIF. So if the property increases 100%, for example, over 25 years, just picking a number, the base will stay what it was at the beginning of that TIF. But, and it can also be set to zero if the CRC actually buys the property. It gets set to zero. But, you know, we still can't lose sight of the incremental tax that's being collected. So once that property's built, the taxing entity can go ahead and collect the monies, the property tax monies, and they dole out the referendum amounts to the district. So we get our, get a good share on that. And I'll show some examples of that here in a minute. So I just expected that a TIF district will generate more tax levies at the 24 cents. This can get pretty complicated. We're taxing about 86 cents on our tax levies now. And Roger and the school district's done a really good job holding that rate flat. A couple of those, of course, the operating referendum and the safety, go up as assessed values go up. And so that, that increment of the 86 cents is 24 cents. So when these new developments go in, we get a 24 cent per $100 of property tax assessment as soon as, as soon as that property's built, which is a good thing for the school district. And the, the TIF in Carmel has grown, grown rather dramatically. Just looking over the last five years, by my calculations, I come up with about 6.4% of annual growth over the last five years. And looking at the last year, we have like about a 12.8% growth at 23 over 22. So that's a 36% over five years. So as these TIF properties are getting built, we get the 24 cents immediately. We don't get the full 86, but there's so much more assessed value that the amount of difference is very significant. And the inflation over that same five years was 22%. So assessed values have gone up 36% over the five years, and inflation has not gone up that amount. We do see TIF districts are going to start expiring in 2028. That, so we'll start seeing the full 86 cents come about. I also believe, and I think others do too, that when, when these properties are, when the TIFs expire, we're going to see a real windfall in tax revenue, because we'll get the additional difference between the 24 cents and the 86 cents. So it's 62 cents. So it's going to, it'll go up three times what we were getting over that 25 years. So when these things start expiring, we're going to probably see a tremendous increase in revenues. This is an example, I'm not going to spend much time on this. This is the Carr Corporation built over by Market District. And the example here shows that, you know, originally, the assessed value of that land was 34,500. Once this, this facility was built, now it's $53 million. So you can see that one of the benefits of doing this kind of development is that they're able to get a parking garage put in there, which is expensive, and a developer may not normally do. And it takes up a lot of land and gets very low, relatively low property tax rates. So it's, it's to the advantage, long-term, to develop more products, projects like this, where there's a lot of density as far as property tax that's generated. Again, the slide's from the CRC and explains why TIF projects benefit schools. And it's, it's around this, they call it the butt-for test, which is that these developments wouldn't be built otherwise by a developer or by the market. But with having some financial incentives, where the CRC can fund it, we get different kinds of buildings built that are maybe better fit for our long-range plans. There is a, I'm going to just read it here, that some state that if you did not do TIF in this area, or school in Carmel, that schools would have received these taxes. That's false. The new projects generating taxes only exist because the TIF enabled them in the first place. So I would say, generally speaking, that it is greatly creating much higher assessed value, and thus a tax base for us, where we have funds that are driven by tax rates. I won't go through all the explanation I've kind of did there, the referendum rate. We're getting 24 cents now on these products, projects, even though they're still, the TIFs are not expired. Here's an example of the two properties that was given to me, where we had, we had occupancy already in them. And I calculated between these two units, that we got about 38 students out of these mostly single-unit facilities. But let me move on. Here's an example of a project, Precinium, over by the Kroger. You probably all know where that is. And the numbers aren't quite complete on the screen, so I'm going to just kind of call some out, is that you can kind of see how the assessed value increased per acre before the development is 318,000. I think it's about a six-acre product, or project. And then the, after the development, it becomes 7.8 million per acre. And it's generating actually a little more, quite a bit more than $125,000. That was a, not actually calculated properly, but if you can kind of follow some of the numbers I'm going to say, is that the, this property was generating about $16,000 a year in property taxes before development. And after development, it's now 153,000, not the 125,000 on that chart. That was just corrected today by them. So we went from 16,500 to 153,000, which is very significant. And we're going to get another four times that in 25 years, when the, when the TIF expires on this. But I think you can see the point that even at just the referendum rates, as long as we have the referendum in place, that we're going to, we're going to get quite a windfall. I won't go through the rest of these charts. There's a whole lot. These are publicly available. If you want to learn more about the specific projects, it's, it's quite amazing what's going on. And I encourage you to, if it's, you find it interesting, to go to the CRC's website and, and study up on it. Any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg? I have a couple, and you may not know them, so I apologize. So for, sorry, my brain's got a lot. I am, Roger, sorry. Can you talk a little bit? Because I, I was privileged enough to serve as commissioner for two years, and I know that I was very interested to kind of see, you know, what was actually, some of the money that we were actually getting from TIF. And I remember I was a little bit like, really? So I'm totally putting you on the spot, but do you have any information?
I just happen to have a little. So first, I've, for lots of years, I've been, you know, in the middle between people opposed versus people in favor. And what I would say to that is, is that these are just some facts. 20% of this community's assessed value is, is in TIF. And as Greg pointed out, we're not getting the additional tax dollars. We didn't lose any, but you know, as these numbers show. But 80% of our property is not in TIF. That 80%, when, so, so when somebody builds Republic Airways, you know, they bring people to the community, and where they're living isn't in a TIF district or probably, you know, the point is, is the 80% is, is 225% more per penny that Carmel gets as compared to Westfield or Noblesville. And you're talking about Hamilton County, so these aren't like, you know, poor districts, right? And so it's hard for me to complain about TIF. In fact, I don't complain about TIF, because we have one of the highest assessed value with 80% of, of any significantly sized, you know, community in the state of Indiana. So, so I think in terms of economic, it seems to me it worked, and it is working. And, and, and to quantify that, as, again, as Greg said, this money, so it's $2.5 billion of assessed value. And that's not protected on, on either of our, any referendum, including ours. And so, except for, well, we don't have that. But if we did, it would be, you know, these TIF districts would pay taxes for any, you know, the referendum. So our referendum, the TIF area, in other words, raises $6 million a year for, just for the two referendum funds. And again, as Greg said, this isn't forever. And when they start to come off the tax rolls, starting, I think, in later, you know, like 2028 or thereabouts, well, we could get a lot more money. But what I think is much more likely is, is, well, first, our, you know, our debt service fund, you only get what you need to pay off your loan. And so what happens is, is if, if the AV goes up even higher, remember, it's already by far the highest around, then what will tend to happen is, is we won't necessarily, we could get more money in the referendum, for example, for sure, as we did here recently. But what's most likely going to happen is, is that there's a really good chance, I think, that our, our community tax rate will, will be less. Because higher AV, you need to raise the same money or a little bit more, you, you need less, you know, less rate. And so I think in, in, including referendum, I mean, I, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead, but, but, you know, if the referendum, if this went up, you know, 20%, 30% or something, we'd certainly be talking about how much should we tax? Because again, our history has been, we don't tax just to raise as much money as we can. And so, so, and we try to balance whatever we're raising with realizing that our taxpayers have to pay for it. And so, so that's just some, some facts that, that are, we're about 20% TIF and our neighbors are 10 to 12, which means still, so our remaining 80% raises twice as much money per penny as, as two of our three neighbors. And so imagine if it, if the 80 were 90 or 100%. It's just, from a taxing standpoint, in my view, it's just going to get better. And, and, and the numbers are correct. Certainly, the right conclusion as far as a good deal of what's built in these TIF districts is not proportionally generating, you know, the same number of students. So as it relates to, you know, we need more money as the community grows, and that's why, you know, the AV's gone up 30% and inflation's 20. This is a big part of that. Because, you know, either this, not either this AV to the extent it's on the referendum, but the 20% grows too, because again, people move to the community to work in these places and do whatever. And so as, so that, that growth in the community, most 80% isn't protected by the TIF. So, so the 20% in my view raises the 80% to what it is now. So it's absolutely worked as an economic development tool in my mind.
Thank you. And then Greg, just to clarify, when you talk about stuff rolling off in 2028, those would be like stuff that was built 25 years prior, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I think it's going to be, I'd like to see a schedule. I'm trying to get to a point where I can ask questions better on the CRC. But I'd, I'd like to see us get a schedule of as those things roll off and as new properties are getting planned and, including enrollment. So I'll continue to work on trying to get more of that.
Well, thank you. It's a good opportunity. Thank you, Kristen. I've had the opportunity to serve in both parks and redevelopment, and there's lots to learn, and I appreciate you guys giving your time in addition to being on the board to those other groups. So thank you. Any other questions for the board members? Okay. Thank you, Greg. All right, we will now move on to our superintendent's report.
All right. I'm happy to report that we have completed the first three weeks of school. It's a big clap, 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 whoosh. There you go. And our schools appear, I put, my heading was "Schools in the Groove," because we, we seem to be in the groove, both logistically and educationally. I'm always amazed at our teachers' instructional creativity, the student connections that get built in these first three weeks, and just a whole lot of fun while covering our curricular standards. If you follow any of our teachers on social media, you see just some incredible assignments and, and a lot of hands-on learning. And, and I think our kids are having a lot of fun and learning while they're at it. Student engagement is really, really important to the learning process, and I just see a high lot, a whole lot of high-level engagement in our classrooms across the district. So off to a good start, knock on wood, keep things going. I wanted to share with the community, to save the date, we're going to have our referendum town hall meetings coming up. Wednesday, September 20th at Clay, 21st at Carmel Middle, and 28th at Creekside. All of them are 6:00 PM. So if you want to learn more about the referendum, we encourage everyone to come out to that. And also, if you have not registered to vote, do that. You need to do that. And it's one of those things that get put off a lot, and registering to vote is, of course, the only way you'll have your voice heard. Wanted to share with you some exciting news about our Carmel High School freshman Sadie Cohen. I got an email today from Jennifer, who was crowned the 2024 Miss Capital Teen, City Teen. It's, let me say it correctly, 2024 Miss Capital City Teen yesterday. So this is the regional scholarship competition that leads to the Miss Indiana Teen Competition, and then on to the Miss America Teen Crown. And so Sadie was also chosen by her fellow contestants as the Spirit of Miss Capital City Award. So you know, they always pick, like, the people, all the people in the pageant will like vote, and so she must have been the special one that they, they liked the best. And so the program is scholarship-based, and it requires a community service initiative as part of the contestants' platform, and this is my favorite part. She created Sadie Smiles for Seniors in partnership with Hooverwood Living, where she will actively volunteer to foster companionship among the residents and advocate for seniors who suffer from social isolation and loneliness. So how sweet is that? And so Sadie truly represents the essence of being a Greyhound, and congratulations to Sadie. I had the opportunity on Friday to go to the Colts Kindness Convocation. It's not easy to say. Colts Kindness Convocation at Mohawk Trails Elementary. And I took my service animal, Jim Dandy, with me, and we went to see that. And the Colts cheerleaders were there, some Colts staff was there, and of course, the star of the show was Blue, the mascot for the Colts. And he was absolutely going bananas, and the kids were absolutely going bananas. And it was a whole lot of fun. The students were encouraged to focus on being kind to each other, and enjoyed a video of several Colts players showing different ways people can show kindness towards one another. So a lot of helping with different things and, and being a good friend, that sort of thing. And then Blue gave a kindness kit, which was full of activities, to each class, and then they had their picture taken with Blue, their teacher, and the class with Blue, along with the cheerleaders and everybody else there. So this was the kickoff, see what I did there? This was the kickoff to the student outreach, and this is actually the first elementary school in the state that's had this program. And this is part of their ongoing kicking the stigma campaign and focusing on good mental health. And of course, for elementary kids, I'd be, let's be kind to one another. So it was extremely loud, and it was extremely exciting for the Turtle Nation. So it was a really good time had by all. So it was always, always a fun way to end the week. I'm not sure that the teachers would say the same thing when they went back to class completely after all that energy, but maybe they, I'm sure they got it done right. I wanted to go backwards a little bit and report on the state of the schools. So about a week and a half ago, the Carmel and Fisher's One Zone hosted a State of the School address. So Dr. Stokes, the superintendent, HSC, and I gave presentations about the wonderful things happening in our school districts. And I love to brag about our kids and, and our, our staff and all the wonderful things that are going on here. So I wanted to share that I did mention what the secret sauce of Carmel was. And that is the combination of our awesome students, our incredible staff, our amazing parents, and the supportive community that we live in. I said that the secret sauce is that we actually really do kind of play out our, our tagline behind me here, that together we achieve, and we achieve higher that way. But I made a mistake, because I accidentally skipped over part of my speech. And so I thought I would just continue my speech tonight, if that's okay. I mean, it's already 10 till 8, we're good. So this is what I was going to, which I skipped over, and I really did feel bad about this. But what, what I was going to say was, with all the wonderful achievements in our school district, it only happens because of the strong support of our parents and our school partners. And I forgot to mention our school partners. So I wanted to say to them all out loud, like- So I wanted to say to them all out loud, like the Carmel Education Foundation, they inspire our teachers and our, our students with grants and they also send every fifth grader to Biz Town where they get to, to see how a little city works and they all play and it works on their civics and also their kind of career, just hits a lot of different things very, very well. And they learn a lot about community. The Carmel Youth Assistance Program, who work with our at-risk students and families and really changed the trajectories of kids who are going the wrong directions and, and turned it around and gave them the support that they needed. And then also the Carmel Library, which I like to call Carmel High School South because hundreds and hundreds of Greyhounds go across the street every afternoon to continue their learning. And the renovation that they did there is so student friendly, it is amazing. And so, you know, just a great, great community partner there. Mr. McMichael mentioned the next couple, Carmel's Dads Club, Carmel Swim Club, all are great partners to work with, hundreds and hundreds of kids take advantage of both of those programs, even thousands, I guess, would probably be a more accurate number. And then of course, there's the City of Carmel, which includes parks, which was mentioned tonight. We just had a meeting with Carmel Fire and Carmel Police Chief. We had the chief's meeting this last week and our, our city is very, very invested, you know, in our, in our schools and in our kids. But I, it goes on to the Street Department and the Engineering Department, all the way to the Mayor's Office and the City Council. They're just very, very supportive of our, really our entire community. So we're very blessed to live in a community that values the well-being of our children and support our school system so well. So then that was the rest of my speech, that's the part I skipped. So I wanted to make sure we got that out. My bell ringer today is going to be a little bit different because I typically choose like the most positive topic for my bell ringer. But a week ago, on August 22nd, we lost our coach, Coach Jack Meacham. He is head coach of the state champion Greyhound lacrosse team. And he was laid to rest yesterday and his passing was really devastating to, to all the people he has impacted, including his players. A lot of the players had him as a youth coach, so more than half of their lives, they were, they were coached by Jack and he is, and almost every kid that spoke and every, every anecdote I've heard is how positive he was. He was just a super positive guy. And so his players, the players and their parents, the coaching community at Carmel High School who voted him Coach of the Year for, at Carmel High School just a couple of months ago. And he was, Mr. Inskey called him and said, hey, you know, you're the guy who they voted you as Coach of the Year. And he said, oh, I got to call my mom. That was his, his response to that, which is quite an honor there at Carmel High School. But then the lacrosse community here and around the state, we're all just devastated by, by his loss. Our lacrosse families held a memorial gathering on Murray Field last Wednesday night and teams from all over the state came. There was a bus from Culver that came down. There were, there were players and families from all over the state that came to support Jack's wife Bethany and his parents who were there and really just supporting each other. And so the gathering ended with a moment of silence around the big C right in the middle of Murray Stadium for a moment of silence. And so closing, I just say Coach Meacham built a wonderful legacy in such a short time. He's only 31 years old, short time on this earth, but please keep the family, the team and all those impacted by this loss and your thoughts and prayers. And so my bell ringer tonight is in honor of a life well-lived and that's Coach Jack Meacham. And that's, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. We are, the, our schools are closed for Labor Day, September 4th. We have a workshop session on September 11th and a school board regular session on September 26th. October 9th through 13th, we will have our first week-long fall break for Carmel Clay Schools. And October 17th, we have our school board workshop session. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, meeting adjourned. Thank you.